Full board is.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. Is this John on there?
No, it's Mike.
Hey, Mike, how are you?
Good.
Um, here from public. I don't see any public to be heard from. First electman's briefing. I'm going to move right along on our agenda. Here from boards, commissions and committees.
Bill, who is in the room? I can't see who it is.
Sherry York just joined us and Dave Rosten from the Rec Committee just joined us.
Good morning, Catherine.
Sherry just said good morning to you. Okay, um. Item five is acceptance of the minutes of January seventeenth. Is there a motion?
Uh, just remind me, what were those minutes put out?
I believe they were sent out, sent out Sunday. Chris and I were here.
Sunday. All right, I'm gonna take a quick look. I didn't get a chance to see them yet if they were sent out on Sunday.
Why don't we just carry it for our next meeting for approval?
That's fine.
Um, here from boards and commissions, we're going to be talking to the Rec Committee directly, so I don't think there's anybody else. Um, review of the Ashford School Roof Project, um, bonding procedures. Um, you should have got the, um, some draft, uh, that we got from Bond Council, um, draft agenda items. There were a couple of options there. But that, that is moving along and, and coincides with the item B on under old business set date. And approved legal notice for public hearing, special town meeting to approve issuance of the Ashford School bond. Um, as you know, the, um, date has been set for February eleventh. Yeah, which is a Saturday at, um, the school cafeteria at ten in the morning. And I guess Sherry is ready to get it into the citizen. The deadline is this morning. Um, the only thing that we need to do is discuss and act on our method. And I guess the open question here is do we, uh, do hybrid voting? Or do we do, uh, in-person voting only? I know I've had a conversation several with Sherry and, um, our registrars. And, uh, they highly recommend doing in-person only. Uh, we have checked with some towns. I in fact, this morning had a discussion with Wyndham, uh, who do in-person voting only on any budgetary issues. Um, we're advised Eastford does the same, Killingley does the same, Wellington does the same, and Woodstock does the same. And the main reason for that is that, and we've, we've experienced it, although luckily it's been on with smaller numbers. Uh, that it becomes an administrative nightmare to verify IDs where you have multiple people in a room. And you're voting on a particular ID, continuing to do, to, to go back and, and make sure everybody is in the room and, and for identification purposes. So, uh, my recommendation is that we go with in-person voting. The, um, agendas that have been prepared for us clearly indicate that, or at least one of the options does. Um, but I opened the floor for comment. Uh, Catherine, Roger, any thoughts on this?
I mean, having sat and listened to the last conference, it just, yeah, it, it's just damn near impossible to assure a proper, solid vote in terms of doing it. A hybrid.
Catherine, your thoughts? I think you're muted. Catherine, you're muted.
Yeah, I was just looking. Um, Bill, did we skip an item on the agenda? It was review of the, um, bonding procedures?
Well, I thought these were tied in together. And that's, I did mention that and I, uh, went on to the next one because they're both relating to the bond issue.
All right, I make a motion that we, uh, when in conducting that town meeting, that, um, a public hearing, a special town meeting, that the voting for the town meeting be in-person only.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been second. Is there further discussion? Um, the, the only thing I, I'd like to, to, to just mention for the general public, you know, we have researched this and our board is, is unanimous in that we want to involve as many people as possible. And, um, we do encourage people. One of the reasons that we're doing it on a Saturday morning, um, and that the school is to accommodate as many people as possible and encourage those people to participate. And I, um, it will be filmed hybrid. You will be able to witness it. And of course, uh, we'll, we'll have, uh, that logged in and archived where you could look at it after the fact, but, uh, we encourage as much participation as possible. And that's why we're going this route. All right, uh, any further comments or discussions? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. The motion on the floor, uh, was to have in-person voting only. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Um, Sherry will get that, uh, agenda. Have, have you folks had an opportunity to re, look at the draft, uh, agendas and, and, uh, that, that we have made up that will be going into the citizen? There were actually two of them done up. One was voting hybrid-wise and the other was just at, at the town meeting. Other than that, they were the same. No?
So if I understand correctly, those also went out on Sunday, right?
Um, Chris, did those, uh, draft agendas from Ida, uh, from Glenn go out on Sunday or were those sent out prior?
The whole packet went out on Sunday.
Sunday.
Sunday morning.
Okay, Bill, we should probably be getting that. Um, for a Monday meeting, we should begin, uh, well, what are we, Tuesday? Um. All right, so I'm taking a quick look at it right now. So with the notice of the special town meeting doesn't have, it says in-person only. Oh, so what you're saying is, is that this is saying that the whole meeting is in-person and it will not be, people cannot, um, tune in, so to speak.
Um.
It says in-person, it says in-person only at the top of the notice.
Chris, I don't have it in front of me, but that should, should indicate voting will take place in person only. You're muted, you're muted, Chris.
Yeah, Sherry and I talked about that. We have to add the first part of the public hearing. And then the second part will be the whole motion. And it will say in-person voting only.
So that's not what we have in our packet, correct?
We're going to include a Zoom link.
I'm sorry, say that again, Chris. I didn't get that.
We're going to include a Zoom link with the notice. So people can watch it.
All right, so what we have in our packet is we have, after the, take a look at the packet, we have, um, there are three draft notices for the public hearing in here, public hearing, special town meeting. The first one is for an in-person only. The second one is for remote links and instructions in notice. And the third one, so I try to cruise through this, remote, uh, remote links and instructions on town website. Which one is the one we're approving? And I don't see the notice of the hearing.
I, I just said, Sherry and I discussed this. We have to insert the notice for the public hearing.
But I, I thought we were, yeah, I thought we were about, I, I thought we were about to approve whatever the notice was. Bill?
I, I thought we were, we were approving the agenda as well as the resolution.
Absolutely.
And, and the document I'm looking at, it says Ashford Special Town Meeting. Up in the upper left-hand corner, it says post on town website. Chris, is that what you're referring to posting on, uh, with the legal notice?
I'm sorry?
Uh, we've also got a page up in the upper left-hand corner in, in small letters. It says post on town website. And that's the agenda.
We have three, we have three of them in there.
And is that what you and Sherry have talked about will be posted as the agenda along with the legal notice?
We're going to insert the public hearing portion of the notice. And then we're going to add a Zoom link.
So, again, I am looking at three different notices.
We're looking at the one that says in-person only.
So why are we looking at the others? Why, uh, why are there three?
They've sent all three notices for consideration. The three options.
So Bill, you're looking at a different one that he's talking about. So these are three options. So this one.
In my pack, I'm, I'm looking at the one that follows the three resolutions that we have, the in-person only, the remote links and instructions and notice. And then the third one, and then following that in our package, I have something that's entitled up in the left-hand, upper left-hand corner. It says post on town website. And it's titled Ashford's, uh, special town meeting.
It's got page seven.
Which, okay, first, first of all, um, isn't there a public hearing?
Sherry and I, Sherry is going to insert the public hearing portion of the notice. And what goes.
Shouldn't we see what that is before we approve it, Bill?
That would probably be a good idea, um, that we, we had it, but unfortunately because of our time crunch right now. Um, I think we're going to have to take them at their word that they'll get that in. Thanks, Roger. I think we're looking the same.
So which one are you looking at, Bill, that we are talking about? Are you talking about the one that says post on town website? Or the one that refers to in-person only?
Well, I'm, I was looking at two of them. And I'm looking at, I believe, the call of the meeting and notice the special town meeting will be the one that's titled in-person only.
It should say voting is in-person only.
Will not be in the, in the notice itself.
Uh, what you should have in these notices, whichever one you choose, is that the voting will be held in-person only. That this will be a, this is a, 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 uh, hybrid meeting, but voting will be in-person only. Somehow that should be in the notice. But I don't see that. You should have on the one that says remote links and instructions in notice. That's where you would put the Zoom link. But that's also where you would say that vote, uh, you would say voting will be in-person only in some bold fashion. So what it could say is on Saturday, February eleventh, yada, yada, ten AM, um, for, uh, the purposes listed below, period. And then it would say voting will be in-person only. And the top of it should say notice of public hearing slash special town meeting.
Uh, looking at, at the three of them. Item one on each of them does indicate conduct a public hearing on the proposed five million dollar appropriation and borrowing.
I see, I see that. It should, it should be in the header as well. Because you're conducting two, two things. You're doing a public hearing and a special town meeting, correct?
That's correct.
So just put them in the top.
So in, Catherine, I'm sorry, I was trying to read and listen at the same time here. So what you're saying is in the heading and the bolded letters, it should say special town meeting and public hearing.
It should say notice of a public hearing and special town meeting.
I agree.
And then when you get, then, uh, also, if you want to do this in a fairly neat fashion, where it says, I'm looking at the one that says remote links and instructions in notice. Okay, I, I don't know which one to look at here.
Well, I'm looking at that one too now.
All right, so the, right after, right where it says in that top paragraph, it says insert, insert Zoom link. Clearly, we're going to put the Zoom link in there.
Correct.
On Saturday, yada, yada, for the following, for the purposes listed below, period. And then the very next sentence next to it should say voting will be in-person only. Period. And then just let it con- continue on.
I don't have an issue with that. I think that clarifies it too even more so.
Yeah.
And it's right up front. You know, well, you've got to clarify it somehow. So that's where it is.
Yeah.
So let me see what is, um, why this one says instructions in notice. I'm looking, oh, here it is down on the instructions for remote participation and voting. Okay. Put in the waiting room. If you were checked in the meeting, another room, separate device to log in. Okay, so.
So that will not apply.
That will not apply. So let's just get rid of that one. And the one, next one is the remote links and instructions on town website. And with that one, again, the same changes in that top paragraph. So with that, I don't know that you need anything that says people need to produce their ID because that will be happening at the door, correct?
Correct.
Sherry's not on this, is she?
No, she had another commitment at nine o'clock. I, I did meet with her this morning, no, early.
All right, lem, how about this? I'm going to recap. And then if there's anything else that we might have missed, you know, I'm looking for people to say something. So again, in the header, it should say notice of public hearing and special town meeting.
That's in the bold letters at the top.
Yeah, that's the header.
Yeah.
Uh, and then where that sentence is, uh, via Zoom, it should say, have this link in it, the real link. And on Sa- on Saturday, February eleventh, da-da-da-da, for the purposes listed below. And then the very next sentence there in that same paragraph will be voting will be in-person only.
Do you have that, Chris?
Could you run through that again, please?
So, no problem. Uh, in the header, notice of public hearing and either public hearing or public hearing and special town meeting, you know, other with a amp and or a slash saying both. And public hearing comes first. Then in that first paragraph where it says, uh, remotely via Zoom, it says link at www.ashertownhall.org. What you really want is the true link. Insert it in there. And at the, as that sentence proceeds, says onset.
Chris, if you're talking, I don't, I.
Oh, I didn't know she's talking.
Uh, yeah, I could hear it through the wall, but. You're still muted, Chris. Chris, you're muted.
I just unmuted.
There you go.
First paragraph does not say anything about Zoom.
I am looking at the one that says remote links and instructions on town website.
I'm looking at the in-person only.
But you don't have a Zoom thing in the in-person only. That's why I'm not looking at that.
Insert that Zoom link.
Well, let's make sure we're all looking at the same one. I think what we're working on right now is the one in italicized letters at the top that says remote links and instructions on town website. Is that right?
Right. Because that's what it's going to be.
Correct.
The remote links and the instructions on the town website is the legal notice that allows voting virtually.
Then cross off instructions on town website. This is the one with the remote link. And it says said town.
I'm going to assume that remote links and instructions on town website wouldn't be on there anyway. But.
Right.
It shouldn't be.
Oh.
But that's the version. It's the version we're looking at.
With the virtual voting.
It doesn't say that.
Yeah, it doesn't say that at all.
And, and I, I think what we're talking about is in that first paragraph, clarifying that, that, and putting a statement in there that voting will be in-person only.
Right. Okay, so this says special town meeting of said town will be held at the Ashford School, four forty Westford Road in Ashford, Connecticut, and remotely via Zoom. And we need to insert the correct Zoom link. And I suggest testing it after we do that. On Saturday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, at ten AM, for the purposes listed below. And the next sentence in that paragraph should say voting will be in-person only. I would underline in-person.
Underline or, or bolden or something, yeah, it should be.
Yeah, I don't, I would underline it so that it's emphasized, so that people realize that, so you don't get people logging on that think they're going to vote. So other than that, is everything else okay with this?
Looks good to me.
Yeah, I'm just doing a quick look through to see if there's just anything else that could be in here to take act, to appropriate, to take action. You might want to, where it has item B, fix the indentation so it matches the others. And what day is it going to be dated? Today? Yes.
Her, her deadline is for today. For the Ashford Citizen.
All right, and we have to.
The notice is going to be dated February first.
No.
It's going to be received by the town clerk.
Oh, okay, so it's not going to be this day of January two thousand twenty-three, which is what it says at the bottom.
Thank you for picking that up.
Yeah.
Okay, so this, this, uh, first day of February, is that what it should, is going to be?
Yes.
The other thing is you're going to need all of our signatures, is that correct?
We don't usually sign. In the past, we have not signed the legal notices, we've just put the names.
Then I suggest that you not have that line for signing have, uh, before each of our names.
Right. Um, also, those. Item one and two at the top of the page.
Yeah.
We're going to change that numbering and put in electa moderator.
Excellent.
Two. And to consider the following, there's going to be three.
Okay, so bear with me. Is, is number one elect the moderator or number two?
No, we don't have a moderator for a public hearing.
Okay, so it's number two, elect a moderator. So do we need the word two in these?
Sorry?
So, um, let me just, uh, describe this. So for the purposes listed below, voting will be in-person only. So I don't think you need the word two. I think it's conduct a public hearing. Elect a moderator, consider and act on the following resolution.
The word two is usually included in each section of the legal notice. That's the way it's always been done and that's the way Bond Council prepared it.
Yeah, Bond and Bond Council prepared it by saying, uh, for the following purposes. They didn't do what we just did was say that the, uh, um, for the purposes listed below. I really don't care. It just, uh, wouldn't make as much sense. That's all.
Well, considering that A, B, C, D, A, B, C, all have semicolons. D, A, B, C, all have semicolons, they're not complete paragraphs, they skip to the next.
And the, the reason they do is because of the colon or semi, yeah, colon that's at the end of to consider and act on the following resolution. That's why they are done, done that way.
Chris, are you ready to read back the changes?
I think so. At the top, notice of public hearing slash special town meeting. The first paragraph, insert the Zoom link. Last sentence in that part of this line in that paragraph, on Saturday, February 11th, blah, blah, for the purposes listed below, uh, underlined and in bold, maybe, voting will be in person only.
Actually, I was, I was saying only the in-person uh, two, two words would be underlined. That kind of doesn't matter to me. I, I just think something, it should be underlined enough to get people's attention. I think there's one more change to that paragraph. Uh, are hereby notified and warned that a public hearing, special town meeting, we're missing a public hearing.
Yep. There was no change in item one. Insert item two, elect a moderator. Item three is to consider and act on the following resolution, colon, A. There was no change. E. Had spaces after B and to take such action. There is no change, D, there is no change. Dated Ashford, first day of February 2023, and take out the signature lines.
I make a motion that we approve the notice for those changes.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I will second it.
Um, any more discussions or comments?
Taking place of the first motion?
Say that again.
You are already, Catherine already made a motion to accept the legal notice for in-person only, the vote was unanimous, is this motion that taking the place of that?
Yes.
So Catherine, do you want to withdraw that motion, your initial?
I withdraw, I withdraw the motion, who was my second, they withdraw their second.
Roger, you withdraw yourself, all right, um, that motion is no longer in existence, it's been withdrawn by the maker and the second. We were able to, motion is as previously stated by Catherine. And we have a second by Roger on it. Um, just for clarity, you did mention we're gonna take out the lines, uh, the bottom for signature and just indicate our names.
Yes.
Yes.
Any more discussions or comments?
No.
By saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I think that does clarify quite a bit. Now, this, the, the page that's in there, it's titled, post on town website, Ashford Special Town Meeting. I've got a number seven at the bottom. I'm going to assume we don't need that at all now.
I was just, just about to say the same thing, and I, uh, just want to thank Sherry and Chris for coming up with it. I know it was a pain in the neck to come up with all the detail in this.
So that will be, and we don't have to vote on it, that will be just a form that we are not, we have not accepted.
I interrupt for a minute, there was something else included in your packet, it was a blurb that Sherry and I put together last week. As a prenotice for the legal notice for the town meeting. And, um, our thought were to put this on the Facebook page, on the website, and ask the school to put it out as a blast. Memo dated 1/24 to town of Ashford taxpayers about upcoming public hearing, special town meeting.
That's the, that's the draft that's in our, our packet that stated 1/24.
Yes.
Title, town of, uh, Ashford taxpayers. Yeah, that's what I was discussing. So is, uh, is that something?
Um, okay, so it looks good. Uh, you get down to the bottom, it says, say something about the voting method. We can put the note in there.
We're gonna add in person only.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, for ASAP or next routine delivery.
I.
Okay.
Any, any comment, Roger, Catherine, on, uh, on that document?
No, uh, if you, uh, do you want a motion on that or what?
Yeah, let's do a motion, uh, should we say?
Then I'll, I can do that.
Okay.
All right, um, that, uh, I make a motion to approve this, uh, it's really a letter, I guess, or, uh,
Or a memo.
Letter, uh, to be posted on the town's website uh, with the change, uh, voting will be in post-person only with the addition of that statement.
Is there a second for that?
I will second that.
We have motion on the floor, it's been seconded, any further comment? Corrections, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
All right, do we have anything further, Chris, regarding the legal notice or the town meeting?
I don't think so.
Is there any more discussion regarding any of that? Hearing none, we will move on. Um, recreation commission membership. Sherry, we have got some concerns that have been expressed to us by the town clerk regarding quorums and membership procedures um, re, on the board, on your board. And I know our, our typical protocol is if we have an interested party, that party writes the board of selectmen indicating who they are and their interest in serving. And we're going to assume goes to a rec committee or is, and then we get an endorsement from the rec committee to the board of selectmen for those people. Those people who are being recommended or nominated, whichever word you, you soon choose, cannot partake in any voting um, on any motions or anything. Whether it be the budget or their own membership or anything like that, it has, you'd need a quorum to do that by your existing membership. I think Sherry's concern is that, and I'm sorry she's not here, but she did have another previous commitment. Um, that on some occasions, one of your proposed new members, it's been indicated has been voting, which is totally inappropriate and not allowable.
Bill?
Yeah?
Bill, would you, would you mind if I just restate a, a slightly different way? Um, not about the, the voting, but only about the membership and how the membership happens. Sherry, um, the only people who can put someone on your board, on the board are the selectmen. I think that's where the confusion is. It would be that your board recommends someone to be put on that board, but the, uh, and the, the selectmen then vote on it to bring them on. You can't do that, the, the board itself cannot do that themselves.
Okay.
So that's what, that's where I think the confusion came into play. Um, you don't, the board doesn't have the authority to bring someone on, because these are boards that were set up, you know, that the selectmen, they are advisory boards to the selectmen.
Yes, so when we have someone interested, we typically invite them to a meeting and let them see how we operate, maybe invite them to a special event if something's going on. And then we know that they need to send a letter to the selectmen indicating their interest in serving. Um, which has happened, I'm, I'm sure you're talking about Amanda Holden. She sent her letter of interest back in September.
Did we see that, Joe? Uh, Bill?
Yes.
I'm trying to remember.
So where's some?
It's even, it's even better when the person themselves sends a letter, but, um, you can certainly do it the other way. Typically, we, you know, get a letter from whoever wants to be on the board.
Right, that is what she did. She sent a letter of interest to the board of selectmen. It's dated September.
Yeah, I don't remember if it was a letter or an email, but we, we did receive a communication from Amanda that she was interested in serving.
Good, and she's been great. She's been working with us at special events and doing a lot with us since September.
I've met her, she seems very dedicated.
So did, Bill, did we put her on the board?
The issue.
No, we have not. She's been helping as a volunteer.
No, I, I get that, but, um, so we received notice from you or, um, that she wanted to be on the board, and we just didn't follow up on it?
We were waiting for a recommendation from the rec commission, a formal recommendation.
Which came in November.
We have that?
It was in our minutes, I didn't.
Not in your minutes, it would not, we're, we are not notified by your minutes.
Okay.
We receive a notification, we would receive a notification from you. We're not necessarily accountable for reading all of the minutes of all of the boards and figuring out what they want us to do. You would be telling us directly.
So I'll make sure to follow through and tell you that directly in the future.
If that's what means. The first selection.
And if you can give us, directed to me or to the board, to this office, just a separate document that says you were recommending, you know, at your November meeting, there was a vote taken by a quorum recommending Amanda Holden.
Okay.
For an appointment, I think that, then we'll be covered. It's just very important for us, we've got so many boards and commissions and everything, that we follow the same protocol for everyone. You have a, a unique situation that was called to our attention by the town clerk at our last meeting that I don't think applies to any other board or commission in town, that, and it was, I guess, when the ordinance was originally drafted for the rec committee, commission. You can actually, by quorum of your committee, accept a resignation. All of our other boards and everything that, that we have, we have to insist that they resign directly to the town clerk. Recommission is an exception to that.
Okay.
I was surprised to hear that, but here, uh, Sherry did do, Sherry much, did do research on that and then advised us for that.
So the expectation, the expectation would be that if a member resigns to your board, that your board would then send some kind of a notification to the first selectmen or selectmen, uh, saying that person has resigned and there's an opening on the board. If you have a person, if you have a person, um, that is interested in filling it, you could state in it that, uh, this other person would like to, uh, be in that slot. We can take action in our, we can take action in our next meeting to, to handle that for you.
Great.
Yeah, that can all be accomplished, our next meeting is next Monday night.
Okay.
And we can address whatever membership issues we have, as long as we have that paperwork at that time.
So do you have the November minutes, what was voted on by the rec commission?
Let's, let's both make sure we're looking at the same thing, you and I can.
Okay, so what has happened in terms of, and it's actually Sherry much that is keeping me abreast of this and telling me who's on for how long and when things go.
And she does the same with us.
Okay, well, what happened in June was Sandy Mokewyn resigned. Um, and we got that sometime over the summer.
Yeah.
Which allowed, created a regular member opening. We wanted to move Andrew Doring, who's been an alternate for three or four years now, up into that spot, just thinking in terms of uh, hierarchy, he should be the next one to go up. He accepted that. That allowed us to bring Dave Roston and Amanda Holden on into the alternate spots. Except, oops, there's one other little oops in there. We had Elena Filippi as an alternate. She has never come to a meeting, has never participated in any, uh, event. I've met her twice, and both times it was at church. And I reached out two or three times asking her about coming to a meeting and getting involved in something. She was sick at one point, she moved to Maine for three or four months. When she came back, we tried again to connect, it never happened. Um, I know it was Jerry Nagy that put her through and wanted her to be on the commission, but she never once has attended a meeting. So the town clerk's office had her on as a member, and that's been the holdup with getting Amanda on, because they said you don't have space for her, you have Elena Filippi on.
So Bill, we have the, Bill, we have the authority to, uh, remove Elena
I'll have to confirm the protocol on that with, with Sherry, I believe we do, but I'm, I'm not sure the protocol on that.
In September, I reached out to Elena in an email saying, are you interested? Are you gonna still be on the rec commission? We have other people ready to take your spot if you're not. And she emailed back saying, I have a full-time job now, I don't have time, I'm not interested. If you have others who are interested, please move them in.
And Bill, that's what we, Bill, that's what we could use.
Yeah, if you can share, share that with us.
Yep, and I did, you asked for it, Bill, last week with that stuff, and I sent that along.
Give it to me again, but yeah.
Okay, she was not, uh, we asked her to come in and sign, the town clerk asked for a wet signature for it on her resignation, she never came in and did it. I made three attempts. I'm done there.
But we, we have something from her email wise.
Email wise, saying she's no longer interested.
I believe that was part of what we discussed with Sherry last, with Sherry much last week, was that the board can officially accept that as a resignation.
Yeah.
So you guys can verify that.
Okay. Amanda Holden has been great, and she has been taking our minutes and actively involved. So I don't wanna hold up the process or embarrass us or her, anybody saying she's not a member or couldn't vote, or we still haven't gotten her approved in.
So again, again, if you've, if you write up.
That she certainly can help, and we appreciate her enthusiasm. And I've met her, and I know she's been at all of the functions that I go to, that you guys have. But she can officially not be recognized as an official vote or part of your quorum until we officially put her on.
And it can happen next Monday.
I'm going to assume that's gonna happen with, next, next one.
Provided you, provided Sherry, you provide Bill with, you know, who, who is, who you, uh, is coming off the board and who needs to go on the board, and the roles that they're going to play on the board, whether they're a full member or an alternate. Just make sure it's laid out clearly so we can work with it.
Okay. The motion made.
There's other, a question I have, in terms of the votes that were taken on the, uh, and that are in your minutes, and I haven't gone through all your minutes to try and figure out which ones are valid or not, but what you have to look at is who voted on something that was not actually an official member.
Um, and that would be Amanda. Um, and that would be Amanda.
Well, no, I'm, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm not asking you to do that now. But you're gonna need to do that because you need to reassess those votes to make sure that you have the majority for approving something.
Yeah.
And, and, and if you didn't, all you have to do, meaning is just reaffirm those votes.
Okay. I don't think it was anything big or significant. I don't think there's a, a real issue there, but I'll go back and take a look at it.
Okay, okay. And we did get, I, I don't remember if you were copied. We did get recommendations from Sherry Much about the protocol on accepting the resignation and who you wanted to, who she thought you wanted to move up. I'll forward that to you just to make sure we're all on the same page. I think you were copied on.
Yeah. Our last meeting, we just had a quorum and Amanda Holden was one of them. So the work that we did on our budget, we had the meeting especially ahead of the deadline for budget would probably be in question, but we can certainly do that again at our next meeting in February.
Okay, excellent. Uh, the budgets that you submitted and, and if you can reaffirm that in your February meeting.
Yep.
But obviously at this point, because they're being scrutinized, we'll be scrutinizing when it's the Board of Selectmen first. Uh, the treasurer is compiling them right now, so is, is not become official yet.
Okay.
They're in draft form.
Um, we're not trying to go against any policies or procedures. It's just that this doesn't come up often enough or regularly enough, or it's always a little different. But I will work harder at checking in with Sherry Much that we're following protocol.
I, I, I guess the other critical thing that I'd like to discuss there is your chairmanship. Um, I know you have been lacking a chairman now for a long period of time.
Yep.
That's gotta change. I don't know if you have interested parties or how we go about that, but to come into the compliance that you need to come into, you need a chairman.
Okay. I'm aware. They, the rest of the committee is aware too.
Okay.
We were, we are hoping that Dave may be interested in it.
Yeah.
Um.
There, there is some question as I recall. Well, that, and I was just gonna say, there's some questions I recall, whether the chair, an alternate can serve as a chairman or not.
Yeah.
No.
I, I don't believe that's the case. But that's something that we're gonna have to resolve sooner rather than later.
Okay. I would like to have a chairman. I can tell you that. Chairperson.
Well.
Does that mean that we like ask someone to step down that's currently a regular member?
Probably.
Ask them to take on the role of alternate?
Probably so.
Okay.
Particularly if you have an active member which cannot participate as much as they'd like to, or you'd like them to, but um, it, it's a critical issue. It's gotta be resolved.
Okay.
And again, as I said, sooner rather than later. Be nice. We clear all this up by your next February meeting and get it done. Roger, Catherine, anything further regarding membership and Rec Committee?
No, it'll be great to get it straightened out and I do hope you're able to get a chairman out of that. Dave, I think you'd be a great chairman.
He's been, been there and done that.
Yes.
Um, I, I just, I, I know I've got the director here.
Some people like it, some people don't.
Well, you're never gonna make everybody happy, but I, I want you to know that I, I I believe I'm speaking for the entire board. I know I'm speaking for myself. We do appreciate very much so what you folks do. Um, I, I don't think the town at, at, in, at large is aware of the scope of everything that you guys do do and you, you volunteers, both members and non-members that you have helping, but Sherry, you know, I've been on a number of your functions and I continue to be impressed with the participation that uh, you guys are able to bring out of the residents in town. We appreciate it. All right. I'm gonna move on to item D under Old Business. And that's status of the after uh, uh, school children program as proposed by the Rec Commission. We had some discussion at our meeting last week um, regarding that and my, my thought was it's time, we, we've got four people who have expressed an interest.
Yay.
We've got two applications in hand. I understand there are two more that somewhere in the pipeline.
I don't have them. Everything I've gotten came up here. I thought.
You had two of them.
Yeah.
And we've got those two. Um. Um. I, I approached the board as to, well, there are two outstanding issues. Do we wanna start interviewing those people? Do we wanna run ads? And open it up to a broader spectrum if we can. I know we did one ad in, in the Citizen, our publication, looking for interested parties. Uh, we didn't do it in this month's publication. I think it was in the
Right. We did in October and December.
Okay.
We asked for applications or if anyone was interested.
Um. One of the, the, the other items that I, I've had some inquiries and I didn't have the answers for was what the pay scale is gonna be between these people. And in my discussions at large, what my thought was, was for, first of all, we gotta come up with titles. One would be after-school uh, school program supervisor, which would be what I would assume, and I'm not locked into supervisor. The board is comfortable with something else. That would be a one pay scale. Then we would have a subordinate to that person, which we would call an after-school program assistant. That would be the second pay scale. Dave, when you did your cost projections,
Yes.
what figures were we looking at at that refresh? I know.
At the time, we were looking at um, fifteen, uh, fifteen, fifteen hours, sixteen, yes.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear.
Just speak up a little. Catherine's having trouble.
Um, at the time, originally, we're looking at for the lead sixteen dollars and fifty cents. The assistant at fifteen fifty and the helper at fourteen dollars or whatever the state of Connecticut minimum wage is at that point. Um. But I'm also looking at other figures that um, that Sherry had put together and increase in the pay scale to the lead um, at the highest level at twenty-two dollars, but have a range between twenty and twenty-two dollars. Based upon twenty-two dollars, that would be roughly uh, thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars a year or based upon a forty-year schools, um, school year. Um, that's what we're looking at. And as an assistant, we're looking at roughly between seventeen and nineteen at the high level of uh, two eighty-five a week or eleven thousand, four hundred dollars for a forty-year school week. And at the high school level, or basically at the, the helper level, we're looking at approximately sixty-one, twenty for the year. Um, the other costs, other associated costs would be seven thousand dollars, which would cover the cost of snacks, crafts, supplies and training. But again, that's projected over a forty, uh, forty-week school, school year. Uh.
I couldn't quite hear that. You had need to say that one again, please.
Okay, the um, looking at seven thousand dollars uh, yearly cost. That's an associated with snacks, crafts, supplies.
That's for train, that's for training?
And training. A combination of.
I'm sorry, was training and something else? I can't hear the first thing you said.
Snacks, supplies, crafts and training.
Oh, oh, supplies, crafts and training.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, just, I wanna kind of focus on salaries right now and the help, but overall, all of these costs are going to be user-paid.
User-paid.
We, we anticipate this program to be self-sufficient.
Correct.
With other than perhaps some initial seed money that we would come up with for snacks and maybe, maybe emergency kit or something up there, medical kit or whatever.
Correct.
Um, the, the cost would be borne by the users.
Correct.
And no cost to the town.
Right.
That's.
The, the seed money, uh, like what Bill just pointed out, the seed money would um, include uh, first aid kit. Um, initially set up on snacks, games, anything that we actually need to start up. But over the period of time, the costs would pay, um, we would take X amount of money out of the program and pay it back to the town. So like what Bill said, it's is, there's technically no cost to the town because the money's gonna be paid back. What I did was the projected assets uh, for the year would be sixty thousand dollars. And projected liabilities is roughly forty-one thousand dollars. So we're looking at roughly between up to like twelve thousand dollars. You, as you might wanna say, as profit over whatever the case may be.
Potential revenue.
Potent, yeah, thank you. Potential revenue. You're looking at up uh, close to twelve thousand dollars. Now, twelve thousand dollars is that still that we may have something that all of a sudden come up out of wild blue yonder, you know, twelve thousand dollars would be able to cover that cost factor there. But overall, what we're looking at is no, absolutely no cost to the town itself, a self-sustaining program.
I would think that any monies, I, I would, I would think the town isn't looking to make profit on this. I would think any monies would go back into the program in some fashion.
Right. Yeah. I, I agree. We're not looking at, at necessarily a revenue source, but at the same time, it would be nice to know we have something to fall back on in case we're not anticipating something.
Correct.
So you have with startup, you said first aid.
If, I'll just finish Catherine for you. I, I think one of the, the, the things that we've tried to, to build into this is the cost factor for those participants, trying to keep costs at a minimum for those families that will be utilized is.
Yes.
Given the figures you've given us, Dave, what are, what would it cost me for one child to participate in the program? On a, on a weekly basis?
Um, you're looking at roughly um, a hundred dollars per week. Uh, per, um, hundred dollars per week per child or roughly it comes down to twenty dollars a day. Um, that's what we're looking at, at this point. Originally, we looked at uh, fifteen dollars. But we're also being realistic that we wanna some sort of buffer there in the event that there's unforeseen cost that um, that's being
that comes up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I, my, I, I've had informal discussions, but I've had in discussions with the person that runs the program in Stafford Springs and whatever else, and that's in line with their cost. Um, between eighty and a hundred dollars per child per week. Um, it seems on the mark as far as those costs goes. Go ahead, Catherine. You had something?
Uh. The, uh, now I, I, I was asking about um, in your startup costs and, and some of your ongoing costs. Any um, background checks, things like that? Is that covered?
It'd be gone to twelve, you know, come out of the twelve thousand dollars at that point. In the background, on the background checks, it has to be very well detailed. Um, so I don't know what company that the town has right now, what kind, what kind of background checks they do. But we're also looking at making sure there's no violence. There's nothing associated with any uh, children issues or anything like that. So the person that's coming in has to have, it, it's, it's gonna be similar to the same background as a paraprofessional and a teacher has. So we cannot, we cannot assume that uh, we're just gonna do a basic background check. It may even include fingerprinting depending on um, what, what we look into.
One of, one of the things Catherine or Roger that, that appealed to me, and I know um, the superintendent had a meeting with her, all of her paraprofessionals up there and her substitute teachers and everything. Um, those folks have already gone through all of those background checks.
Correct.
And credentials and, and most of them have done the training with CPR, some of the medical training that we'd be requesting and that uh, as well as already being in place up there. And I, I believe the two application we have, one is from a paraprofessional and the other is from a substitute teacher up there who have all those background checks already in place.
That they have to have those before they can be certified.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Well, what I like to do, just trying to tackle this at one time, and it's obviously a very complicated situation. That's why we were, we've been walking before we can run on this thing because this is a critical responsibility that we're all undertaking if we so choose to do that.
There, there's, there, yes, and I understand where it's coming from because there, we're dealing with children. And in today's age, we have to look at the risk uh, assessment that we're not going to, meaning if something happens to a child, we'll look at legal uh, legal implications um, to the individual that's in uh, involved and also potential possibility as we as a town or a board of education. Yeah. So we have to be, I understand, we have to be very careful.
It's a major responsibility.
Yes.
Well, what, what I had in mind as dollar amounts was the supervisory position um, from nineteen to twenty-two dollars from the starting. And with that person's assistant position at seventeen to nineteen.
Yeah.
And if we have a helper, like we were talking about, trying to encourage a high schooler or somebody perhaps in a training program at UConn, starting at a minimum wage situation.
Correct.
Um, Roger, Catherine, do you have any thoughts on that, those rates?
The minimum wage is now fifteen dollars an hour, isn't it? And Bill, in this thing that I wrote up, those are the exact numbers we talked about and what I put in our budget.
The, the numbers that Bill just uh, read off, and I'll just do, do this one more time, is that uh, I went on the high end at twenty-two dollars. That would be for a lead as thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars for the lead. And for the assistant, I went for the high of nineteen dollars. That's eleven thousand, four hundred dollars. And for the high school student, based upon that, um, I went at fifteen dollars. That's roughly sixty-one, twenty. It's um, and also on administrative costs, I put the um, I went on the high end of um, of three thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
And those are all calculated into your overall expenses where we got to the twenty dollars per day.
Yes, that personal liability. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Roger, Catherine, any thoughts on those figures we're talking about?
I mean, one of the conversations we had.
Yes, I do.
You know, if, uh, what, what numbers are we looking at again for uh, your, are your estimates?
Um, they're right here.
You mean bottom line?
Yeah.
Um, I calculated low at twelve, twelve people, but we really think we're gonna get fifteen kids and we can handle up to twenty with this staffing structure.
Mm-hmm.
That's totally, we're, we're within up to twenty.
They, based upon what everybody just pointed out, is that we definitely, to, to get the program going, you'll definitely need fifteen. If you went down below, you went down to two, you're cutting it really close. Are you able to do it? Yes, but you're very it's, the numbers are gonna be very close at that point and lose that buffer. Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Um, the thirty-five hundred dollars, who is the admin?
Yeah.
Who has the admin? Who, who would have the admin role?
Yeah, my person is gonna be in the individuals doing the administrative uh, record-keeping. And that would in quote, um, that covers um, put money into a spreadsheet.
No, no, I understand. I understand that piece of it. I'm asking, it's not one of these three individuals. Who would it be?
No, no. At this point, we don't know who it's gonna be at this point.
Would that be something that could be incorporated in the super supervisor's role?
It can't be incorporated in the.
Cause that's where I envisioned, timekeeping, money-taking, that sort of thing.
That can't be incorporated in the lead position.
That's how I That's how I kinda envisioned it, Catherine.
And the the pay you mentioned, I had some paperwork on common sense payroll or something, that's included in your liability costs.
Well, we we looked at that and I met with our treasurer and our deputy treasurer and everything and. What they said, we can handle that under our town payroll with with little or no impact. And these people would actually be hired as a part-time town employee, no benefits. We did, we did research that.
I just came across that.
Yeah, we uh because that's the firm that Babcock Library uses or whatever. Um so we did research that and subsequent to that, I had a meeting with our finance office who said really. The time that would be involved would be very minimal and they thought they could absorb that in their typical payroll.
Which is very helpful.
Yeah, Sherry has handled a similar program. Sherry Susie has had a similar.
Start qualifying what Sherry we're talking.
I got too many series in my life. But anyway.
How many, how many weeks will a year would this program be active?
It'd be filed for the school year.
Which is forty.
I don't remember how many weeks there are in a school year. Thank you. I was just doing on the admin costs, forty-one weeks with the admin. And the admin being the senior person. Who's getting twenty-two dollars an hour, does that work? Forty-one week.
I I I I would wanna think that it does work and I think that's where that twelve thousand buffer. Particularly that we seem to have right now and additional revenue, if it didn't, it would be absorbed in that.
I was trying to get a little more specific than that to make sure we've got it all covered. And I'm not looking to, you know, just kind of lump it in there.
Yeah, I ba- I based the numbers um Catherine on forty weeks. I didn't base it.
Yeah, I just did it, yeah.
So even if you have forty uh forty-one school. Forty-one school weeks, then you'll still have, you'll still offset the cost of that particular week.
Yeah, so what it looks like is it'd be like uh two and a half hours a week of admin. If I I just did the math on the forty-one weeks and the twenty-two dollars an hour. Okay. What else?
One thing I wanted to suggest, uh Catherine, can you hear me?
Yes, you need to understand when you're going through Zoom, people just need to be facing the camera when they're talking.
All right, can you hear me better now?
Yeah, I can hear you a lot better now.
Okay, great. Um one thing that came up at our last rec commission meeting, which I thought was a great idea. Was that if this after-school program generates some money. That we would like to see it um used toward a summer camp program because most likely these same families. Are gonna need a lot of childcare in the summer. Um and so whether that means we run our own summer camp for a few weeks or we help. These kids get placed into other summer camps, I think a natural flow. Of income from this would be to provide more childcare opportunities in the summer.
Okay, so now I haven't, I have a thought about that, Sherry. This um, first of all, I wouldn't wanna put the cart before the horse. This program is complicated enough without jumping into, hey, we're gonna have to take extra revenue from it. And put it into another childcare program really in the summer. Uh the other thing too is just a little reminder, and it's not that I. Uh I certainly have had to raise three children over many years and had to deal with childcare. This particular problem for these parents is not one of the towns making. And what you've done is you've come to us to ask us to solve a problem that is not a selectmen problem. Okay, it is one that you have identified in the community where people are unable to get childcare. Okay, so please don't make an assumption that we're supposed to be fixing it. Okay, we're looking at this program to go, is it something that's safe? Is it something that's viable? Is it something that can be handled consistently? I still have concerns about it being consistent of all of them. The consistency when we've only had two people who've shown any kind of an interest. Uh and you know, what happens if we don't have one of those people for whatever reason? We have now left those parents in the lurch. So I I'm gonna be a little more cautious maybe than some others, I don't know about this because of that. I know what it would be like if it were my child and I had gotten them into this program and all of a sudden. The program had couldn't run for a few days or a week or whatever because they don't have the people that they thought they were originally gonna have. For whatever reason, they got sick with COVID or whatever. So I don't think the people have really thought through that part of it.
Um I agree with you and we have identified hiring and backup as one of the be- biggest challenges with it for sure.
I I had a parent call me and was scolding me that. We had not moved fast enough on this and why we were dragging their feet and.
There should be no scolding.
I I stressed to her that this was not something that the Board of Selectment is obliged to do, but we care to do to. To accommodate people who are in a problem, but I said, and I I was speaking for myself, I said, one of my concerns. Cause I've talked to Eastcon, I've talked to folks with the YMCA in Vernon. That have both given these programs up and primarily they were given, they were given up because of their concerns. Of not being able to have reliable help to sustain them. And that's why we're taking our time. I also told this person about. The complexities of what we're looking at here and I said, I'd be glad to sit down and have a meeting with you to go over them. Which I was never taken up on, but uh I I mean, we. We have obviously have a fiduciary responsibility, but we have a moral responsibility with the community. To look at everybody's best interest and there is a high liability concern here and and. We're taking those lives of those fifteen or twenty children into our hands for several hours a day. Um we look at it as a a major responsibility. That we wanna be able to make sure we we go in this wide-eyed and and avoid as many surprises as possible and I. Appreciate the efforts that you guys have made, but we're doing the same thing from sort of a different level.
Catherine, I very much agree with you and have never thought that it was the recreation department's responsibility to provide childcare for these families. Either I prefer to run recreation programs, not do childcare personally myself. However, after getting the request and looking at what it involves and seeing how it runs in other towns. And looking at the assets and liabilities, I feel like the assets are are good and it's something that we could do.
Sherry, it won't be the rec department running this program. Just so you know.
It won't be the rec department running this program?
No.
That's news to me. What am I doing here? What have we been working on this for? It just went into my budget.
I haven't seen you, I haven't seen your budget.
Well, the numbers just went into my budget and yes, I thought I had some ownership over it. If not, then please let me go, cause I do have a full-time job without this.
Bill, you didn't have that conversation?
Well, just just to be clarified, this is gonna be a program sponsored by the Board of Selectment.
Then you guys do it. I hope you appreciate the work we put into it.
Sherry, just let me finish. In in coordination with the recommission.
What does that mean, Bill? You guys taking all the income? What does that mean?
No, I don't think anybody has talked about doing that. We're we're not looking at this as a revenue source, we're looking at it as. Being implemented by the Board of Selectment with the authority of the Board of Select. Working in conjunction with the recommission.
These people hired our town employees.
But but by the nature of everything we're talking about, by our liability insurance, it's under our insurance. By our finance department with our payroll, it's under our responsibility. When it comes to discipline, whether it be. We we have a a a problem with with one of the staff that we hire. That responsibility is gonna be in this office to handle one of it.
And so what is my role or what is the rec department's role?
You're you're part of our eyes and ears. And and advisory capacity of the Board of Selectment to know if this is working.
You've uh uh can I describe this? You have come to us with what you consider to be a need. Of some of the parents in the town. You have put, you've done a great job putting together something that would be a childcare program. We're still kind of feeling our way through it. But what you've done is you've identified the need and when Bill says you're the eyes and the ears, yeah, you identified the need because you heard from the parents. Okay, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to be working a lot of extra hours running this program. Cause as you said, you have a full platter. So we need to make sure that we're, you know, clear about how we're gonna be managing this if this pro- if this program comes to fruition. And it's not only how it's managing it while it's working, it's like what's gonna happen if it's not working? We're gonna be accountable.
I mean, one of the things that Sherry, you and I had a talk on uh when we initially started talking about this. Was you don't have the time. That we know we need up there and and you had said to me, well, perhaps I can give up some of my rec responsibilities. And what what was my response to you was, I don't want you giving up, you 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 have more right now. And and we have more of a need for recreation right now than than you have the hours in the day to hand. And you know.
I thought.
My 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 whole preference for this and I've told all of you this. And 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 I've got to to our superintendent was. In reality, I think those that are best suited to run this program are at the school. They don't wanna take it on.
Right, they have clearly indicated what they are and are willing to do and it's a lot, they're giving a lot by giving us their building.
They and they are, but it it's a partnership and that's how I look at this whole thing. It's a partnership between the Board of Selectment, the recommission, the school and every, to me, what. We're all aware of is the social need in town. And believe me, I've had some parents call me, I'm sure you've heard from some of them that are in dire need of this such a program. I was shocked when I heard there's only two certified childcare programs here running in town right now. Um there there's a there's a dire need and a shortage in that and that's what we're all trying to address. I don't wanna get into a contentious situation where you think we have a lack of appreciation for you and Dave and. Everybody that's involved in this, it's not doing, it's just as the Board of Selectmen. We are at the top of the ladder with wanting to make sure all those bases are covered. And and it's not to demean anybody's participation or look down, it's just to make sure. We're looking at the broad picture with the entire town's. Situation involved, cause when it hit the fan, quite honestly, this is where the heat. But it I I I know all the work you've done into it, I know you've put your heart into it, I know the same with with Dave. And I'm sure your commission feels the same way, but and we appreciate it, but yeah, that's why this has been going so slow. It's something that we weren't looking to do, but we we verify, we've recognized the need. And we're trying to facilitate everybody pulling together on this thing.
I imagined it falling under the Parks and Recreation Department as it does in the town of Coventry and in the town of Mansfield. Um I was seeing it as a um new program thrust for us in a way to bring in. More income that I have been asked to do for nearly every year, you know, with expenses. And I think it's a good business for us philosophically, I have trouble with, whoa. Do we put that time and energy and resources into twenty families with this big need? Or I've always considered my job to be serving the whole town.
Well, which we all do, we all serve the entire town. And 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 I think what's critical here and why we've done all this homework and 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 all the effort has been made. We wanna get this program off off the ground and we wanna do it where we we we've tried to cover all our bases. But I also think we're gonna have to be flexible and and reevaluate after it's in operation for. A few months or six months or half a school year uh to take a look and see maybe. Maybe we have to reassign responsibilities. Or whether those two or three positions that we're hiring are sufficient.
Bill, what I was hoping to suggest, like we have applicants who are interested now, if we don't. Interview or talk with them soon, they are gonna lose interest. One of those applications came in in early November. And it's now the end of January, so we need to let them know where we're at.
What what I was hoping to accomplish today was that my board could consider, one, and I think we've talked about that is. Salary structure because one of those applicants contacted me and said, what are you paying? And I didn't feel comfortable to even talk about any pay scale because my board hasn't. Come to that yet or we discussed, I know we we figured, but that's kind of internal. Uh estimating that I've looked at, I don't, so I was hoping to come up with a pay structure and I get the feeling we're kind of all on. Same page on that. And the other was, what do we do with these two applications or four that we anticipate? And can we start interviewing? And.
What I was going to suggest, Bill, is I hope we can start interviewing. And I also think it would be wise to try to launch the program or start the program this spring, March or April. And get it off the ground for the end of the school year and then you know what your staffing structure looks like. What your requests are from parents and families in need, run it for a couple of months and as like a pilot and see how does this work? And that would put you in a really good position for September when you're wanting to launch it for a full year.
I think that's a good point. I need to give us a little two or three month buffer where we can try to see where we need to make adjustments come the new year. And it'd be set that way.
And it it's also would be great advertising, like the message that would get out in town would be, oh, they are having after-school, they are. Gonna run a program or they're they're really looking to do it. Um and I think it would put us in a good place for next September.
What I wouldn't wanna have happen is I wouldn't wanna have you going out of this meeting and telling people this program's gonna be in place in March. So let's all make sure that, you know, we're not there yet to make that kind of a commitment. So I I wanna manage manage parents' expectations. I'd rather, you know, have them be a little frustrated with us than to hear something that may or may not happen.
Well, I think it was constructed to have the conversation about the pay schedule and positions. Um I think it's okay, I mean, we've okay identified that uh it. I guess that we've have to sit there and talk about advertisement and we gotta talk about interviews. Because we can't just, you know, we have to put put this out there for everybody.
Do we, do we bring the 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 folks that have expressed an interest? Whether it's two or four in and talk to them or are you more comfortable doing a new ad campaign? And putting putting the information out there?
I mean, I have no problems bringing people who are interested, but we do have to advertise.
See, I think we had, my my thought is we do both. We have people who have expressed an interest, we don't wanna lose them. And at the same time, we can bring them, we'll give them an idea of what we're talking about pay structure. We'll get feedback on on what their qualifications are. And but at the same time, good word out there that we are interviewing and and. And and hiring for the program. I think when you say we're hiring, that means we're gonna. We're interviewing for the potential of starting the program.
And also, just to throw this out, instead of just coming up with one specific cost per hour. If it could go with the pay range, so in other words, as I'm looking at right here, go with twenty to twenty-two. Seventeen to nineteen, so this way you have. Go with twenty to twenty-two, seventeen to nineteen, so this way you have room for negotiation.
That's what I had in mind, so.
I like that idea too.
Yeah, 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 not a specific dollar amount. And, and let's face it, the, the, the way I came up with that twenty to or nineteen to twenty-two was that's in line. With, it encompasses what the paraprofessionals are already getting and what their new contract. Is going to include come July first. So we give ourselves a little measurement, I'm, you know, I also think that. I like the idea of starting somebody at one and then letting him be with a certain amount of time and then go up to a little higher step.
Something that can be, it's up to the three of you have to determine. You know, if you're a higher, or if we're gonna hire a person, at what rate is your probationary period, is so forth, and so forth.
All right, well, do we contact these four people that have contacted us and I can try to.
I thought we had two.
We have two applications for interested parties. Two of those parties, my understanding was, and I gotta find out why we haven't received them, we're doing application and getting them into us.
Right, I wouldn't, I wouldn't interview anybody that hasn't put in an application.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Wouldn't be proper, you know, to do that. The other thing too is to make darn sure that when we're interviewing them. That they understand that this is not in place yet and we're, this is a lot of fact finding and making sure that we understand what the interest really is. And you know, our concern is making sure that we have good people in place and that, um, it's reliable.
Sounds good to me, I think we have a plan and I'll contact the two people. Um, that have not put in their application and ask them to get them into us ASAP. And then I'll proceed to try to facilitate an interview. Yeah, and I think your point, if we can look towards March or April. Um, to the end of the school year, take it from there. Anything else?
No, Bill, I'm gonna have to leave because I didn't anticipate this meeting would go this long. I have a doctor's appointment at eleven in Manchester.
You go right ahead, the, the only thing, if I could just ask you to stay, we do have a recommendation. And we got a letter that should have been in your package for an appointment to the, um, Agricultural Commission.
Okay.
I'm gonna go.
Okay, thanks, Sheri. David, thank you very much. Well, she's gotta go and she's got a doctor's appointment. Okay. Thanks, Dave. I'm sorry, I can't find my paperwork on the. It's Mr. Murphy that's being recommended?
Which, which ag commission?
On the ag commission, yes. You have it in your package here.
I, I saw it in the email, so I don't have it like back here.
It's my papers, so.
No, I don't have, I, I saw it in the email, but I don't have it in my collection here. Uh, Chris, do you have that letter from, uh?
Bill, I have to leave, so I don't think you need me, don't worry, I don't think you need me for this. Um, if someone has made a recommendation, I'm sure that it's not gonna be a problem.
Okay.
I'm assuming that your ARPA allocations, one of the things you're gonna be talking about might be the pickleball courts.
Well, I'm gonna bring that up, but basically also bring up about a, a, the school bus. But Roger and I can decide on that, I'm, I'm sure.
I, yeah, I think that you'll do just fine with that.
Okay.
So, thank you, I'm sorry that I can't stay longer, I didn't realize it would be such a long meeting.
I didn't either, yeah, thank you.
Okay. So I'm leaving at, uh, ten thirty-six.
Catherine is leaving at ten thirty-six, thanks Catherine. I, I had it right here, I don't, I don't know what I did. I, I will entertain a motion, I will make a motion. At the recommendation, um, of the ag commission. To appoint Joe Murphy. To fill the commission, uh, opening.
All right, then, I'll second that.
And I'm trying to see who the vacancy is, not that we need that, but. Any more discussion? All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye, aye, thank you very much. Chris, are there any tax refunds?
No.
Okay. All right, item C, Roger, is, uh, the make a recommendation. We have received, I don't remember, I think we touched on this at our last meeting. We presently have a bus that we're anticipating delivery on probably in August. Full-size bus. Um, the Board of Ed had asked us to consider. Uh, changing that bus from a diesel to a gas. This is kind of a side note. And, uh. We made an inquiry of our distributor and found out it's too late in the process of. That bus, it's coming down, I think it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And it's gonna be a diesel. Now, we have a rotation every year, we buy a new bus. They are, they are, yes. They are requesting that we buy a mini bus. In lieu of a full-size bus in next year's budget.
Okay.
And we have been anticipating that we would buy that bus also as a municipal service. With ARPA funds. And we've calculated that into our ARPA. Uh, calculations.
Okay.
It has not gone to town meeting yet because we have to vote on it first.
All right.
Um, that costs, there is one in production that we can commit to. Again, we'll need a town meeting first. That's come in at eighty-seven thousand. That's a gas-powered. Two-wheel rear rack, double rear axle, twenty-four capacity bus. Um, so I guess the motion that we would entertain, Roger, would be. To authorize the Board of Selectmen to go to town meeting. To ask for approval for an ARPA appropriation in the amount. Of eighty-seven thousand dollars. For a bus for years twenty-three, twenty-four. Is that as you understand it, Chris?
Yeah, yes, the sooner we confirm it. Right now, we're first in line to get this bus that is currently in production. It'll be ready for delivery in August or September. And the way it affects. What we have for ARPA money left. Um, it brings our spendable balance up if we go with the mid-bus as opposed to a full-size bus. So. It looks good, but we have to, we have to, as soon as we can, let Bluebird know that, yes, we want it. The school wants it, it's been reviewed by Joan Salati, Seth and Cindy. And they are all in agreement that this is what they want.
So anyway, what we need is a motion from our board. Authorizing us to request a town meeting, which we'll. Schedule sooner, as soon as possible.
Okay.
Um, it, I don't think we ought to put it on with our February eleventh, but I think it's just. Kind of cloudy issue. Uh, but anyway, if you'll make a motion of that.
I'll make that motion.
All right, that it is the board's intention to recommend a town meeting, the purchase of the twenty-four capacity minibus. In amount, should we do the eighty-seven or, or go over that, Chris?
Not to exceed ninety?
Why don't we say not to exceed ninety?
Just a minute, he quoted us eighty-three-six. I'm not sure. I would put it in for ninety because I don't know about the cameras or anything like that.
Okay, let's say not to exceed. We're gonna say not to exceed ninety thousand. For a town meeting to be called as soon as possible.
That's my motion.
And I'll second that motion, any further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. Now. There are a couple of other things that I will bring before the board, hopefully on Monday. Uh, potential recommendations on ARPA, not, not big-ticket items. Um, Catherine brought up, I'm not sure why it's in, in this particular, but. I got some complaints about the pickleball court and some water setting on that. It's just an FYI. Um, I've been in touch with the contractors, he wants me to call him, they're gonna take a look at it. I don't know if we have a warranty that covers that or not. They're an upfront legitimate outfit, I assume they'll make good on it, so. But I'm, I'm on top of it and I'll report more on our. At our Monday meeting.
Kind of like Frosties or the. Or were the issues with, I saw the pictures.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's Frosties, I think it's a leveling issue.
Can I leave? I'll review the video, I gotta get the legal notice.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Um, you know, it is what it is, I, yeah. It's not my expertise, so I don't know if it's something they didn't do or. Um, we did have cost projections for a couple of other bidders that wanted quite a bit more money. We went with the twenty-five as compared to forty thousand.
And I'm not trying to minimize, but I just remembered that, yeah, of course, as you always had the Squeegee to, to get out the standing water.
So anyway, we're, we're, we're looking at it, we'll, we'll take it from there.
Okay.
Um, I don't have anything else other than what we've already discussed. As far as the good, uh, marks of the good of the board. Items for next Selectman's agenda, I think we've got settled.
Yep.
And, uh, my, my thought was in, in instituting or recommending, we institute these meetings that. They're not gonna end up being two-hour events. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I've got ten forty-four, meeting is adjourned.